Good morning, everybody. I think it is ten o'clock, so I think we'll make a start. I'm expecting Nick Gay, he's and he always rolls in just at ten o'clock or about the same time. Morning, Nick. Stephen Moyer, we are expecting, but he's going to be late. Emma is joining us on Teams or Zoom. And Mohammed is not able to join us today, neither is Chris Bowden, because they're both sick. So this is a special meeting of the Audit and Accounts Committee on the twenty second, twenty sixth of February, two thousand and twenty five. So we haven't got any minutes for the last meeting, because it's a special meeting to consider the audit and accounts. The County Council allows filming and photography at its public meetings, so please feel free to take pictures and use social media during the meeting. Please ensure, though, that your phone is set to silent or vibrate whilst the meeting is taking place. This meeting is being live streamed, and a recording will be available to view later on the County Council's website. There is no fire alarm test scheduled for today, so if the alarm sounds, please leave by the side doors to my left and use the external staircase to assemble in the car park. So item one is apologies for absence and declarations of interest with the Democratic Services Officer. Shinda, report any apologies, please.
Thank you, Chair. As you mentioned, apologies have been received from councillor Bowden and from Mohammed Hussain.
Thank you. Does any member wish to declare any discloseable pecuniary interest or non-statutory discloseable interest? No, thank you. Item two is petitions and public questions. None have been received this month, so we'll move on. And item three is the substantive item, which is the final statement of accounts for two thousand and three, two thousand and four. Tom Kelly, the Service Director for Finance and Procurement, will introduce the report. And we're also joined by Sarah Brown and Emma Larkham from KPMG. So, Tom, do you want to introduce it first?
Yes, good morning. Thank you, Chairman. I've also got Ellie Todd, our Strategic Finance Manager, alongside me. I'd suggest it probably be useful to deal with financial reporting side of the papers in front of you, first of all, and then come on to value for money. So if I say just a little on to introduce financial reporting, and then KPMG may want to come in at that point as well on their reports. So the committee will be familiar by now that we overall have a disclaimed opinion, but the committee today asked to receive an updated set of signed accounts that reflect the conclusion of this year's audit work, just ahead of the backstop date that's coming up. And although it's a disclaimed opinion, as we've discussed before, we are in a significantly different position to the previous year, a much fuller report, more complete audit work, and that kind of reflects as we go through. I just draw the committee's attention to page nine. You'll see listed there, there are a number of adjustments that the council will be making as a result of the audit work. I'm happy to kind of pick up on any questions on those individually. And should particularly take the committee all the way through to page three, two, six in the in the pack, where KPMG make recommendations about in relation to financial reporting. And the council responds with its its replies to those recommendations and the actions that we will take. So particularly the red and amber rated recommendations there, one around valuation of property. And that's an issue where in the account we have made a partial adjustment, reflecting some of the audit work, needing to kind of go back to our external valuer iteratively, and making a significant material adjustment, but actually not quite coming or not not going the full distance that KPMG's valuer would suggest, and perhaps we can pick that up further. If the committee needs further explanation, and then also a recommendation around bank accounts and the council accepting that recommendation to close those bank accounts that are dormant, obeying, and and no longer needed. And I should say as well, on the valuation point, the council accepting improvements needed to process around the completeness of information going to the valuer and the kind of review of that information coming back at earlier stages and confident with the additional time built into the timetable this year, that there are, there is scope to do that. I think those are the main aspects of the updates to financial reporting, the report details as well, the updates added to the post-balance sheet event section. And then the recommendations kind of cover off the committee seeing the updated reports, the report from the auditor, and then authorizing the section one five one officer to provide the management representation letters, which will happen just before the the final sign off later in the week. So that's probably what I wanted to say on financial reporting, first of all.
Okay, thanks very much, Tom. Any questions for Tom, just for clarity at this stage? No, sorry, go on, Jeff. Yeah, so I was going to invite Sarah or Emma just to cover the initial audit of accounts, and then we'll do the VFM bit later.
Sorry. So hopefully I had an opportunity to see the report that that we issued. It is quite detailed, I appreciate, so I wasn't intending to go through kind of page by page in detail. And actually, the at a high level, it's very similar to that that we provided at the previous audit committee, albeit with more flesh to the bones in terms of some of the issues. But ultimately, we haven't changed our position in terms of the issues that were reported to the last audit committee. So I think firstly, just to say, we are in a good place. It's obviously been a challenge to to meet the backstop date with very busy week this week in the world of local government audit, but we are anticipating that we'll be able to sign the opinion in time to meet that backstop deadline. We're not waiting anything further from management. It's now just a case of finalizing things on our side. In terms of the significant risk areas, we have either concluded where we've been able, or hopefully we've been clear in this report, where certain areas will be disclaimed. In terms of the significant risk areas, the key areas of focus from that perspective have been around valuation of land and buildings and investment property. And as Tom mentioned, we identified a number of audit adjustments. Some of those have been amended and reflected in the most recent version of accounts. There is one that remains unadjusted that is material, and therefore that will be noted in our audit opinion. Valuation of pensions has completed, and there is some detail further in this report in terms of the assumptions that underpin that valuation and confirming that all of the assumptions used by the actuary were considered to be balanced and within the range that we would expect. There have been some disclosure adjustments which management have put through, otherwise that area is concluded. We also talked to the last committee around this land. And again, we've just noted a little bit more detail in this report as to why we consider there to be an increased credit risk in relation to the recoverability of the debtors and the risk of a potential material provision required. Otherwise, they're probably the key areas with regard to the financial statements that I wanted to mention, but perhaps happy to take questions at that point.
Okay, thank you very much. Tom referred to the audit differences proposed for adjustment. Could you just confirm whether, apart from the investment property bit, which we'll come to, you're comfortable with all the other adjustments being proposed?
Yes, the other adjustments are in line with our understanding and have been amended by management, so we're comfortable with those.
So there's various things I would like us to explore, and then we'll come to Jeff. One, I think some of the things which are outstanding from the County Council include the letter from Michael, don't they? So apart from that, you've got everything that you need.
That's right, although we wouldn't expect Michael to sign that until he signs the accounts. So yes, we'll we'll expect to receive that at the point that we receive the signed accounts.
So the 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 key topics that I wanted us to cover, the investment properties and the valuation and the differences between them. Pensions, because I always ask Alison whether she is comfortable with everything that's been written about pensions and this land. But I know, Jeff, you wanted to raise about waste BFI as as well. Are there any other topics, folk, that people want to raise? No, okay, well, let's let's deal with Jeff first.
Well, it was two things. It was one was investment properties as well. So can I deal with that as well? So, yeah, okay. Both my questions actually turn around the typical unusual accounting philosophical question of who are the accounts actually for? Who reads them? What are we trying to say? And to whom are we saying it? But in the terms of investment properties, and I've said this at our last meeting, I regard the valuation of property and assets that we're using are going to remain operational, never going to be sold. It's completely academic. I'm quite agnostic as to how you get to it. The market value, replacement cost, historic cost, it it really doesn't matter, but investment properties does matter. Because they are going to be sold, they are realizable, and they may be needed to fund at some future stage services, their investment. And I really don't understand the basis of this difference. Does it turn around a yield? Does it turn around a projected cash flow? Is it, I mean, is our is our valuer, the county's valuer, taking bricks and mortar values? And it seems to me, given that the valuations take place cyclically, so we've only got one fifth of the valuation, and you've already come up with this, one fifth of the portfolio, that's a question, actually. Refer back to that. You know, if you extrapolate that, the difference is going to be even more material. So I can't actually understand why we are not changing the figures in line with the audit valuation, because that must be, at the end of the day, the figure that that we can properly support. So it's not a criticism, of course, but it is quite a substantial difference, and clearly the auditors are worried about it. So I guess there's a question, the question really is, how does the difference arise?
Sarah, do you want to comment first, and then we'll invite Michael?
Yeah, I think just on the point around the the valuation, actually, for investment properties, the majority of the portfolio is externally valued. The once every five years is for property, plants and equipment, which, to your earlier point, is is more around the kind of operational assets. So for investment property, we don't have an issue with the fact that that they have been valued every year. So there is an there is an up-to-date valuation that's been undertaken. I mean, I think the the key issue with the valuation and probably the the difference that we're talking about is in relation to a couple of assets in particular. There isn't necessarily a difference in the methodology that's being applied. The EUV is what we would expect to see, and the valuation is driven by essentially an expectation of rental yields per kind of square footage, which again is what we would expect to see. The key difference really arises on the ability to for the council to continue to be able to charge the rent that it's charging. And I think what's probably quite important, and this is this is where we're coming from as KPMG, is it's not even necessarily about what the council thinks they might agree to pay in the future when the break lease comes up. The valuation is derived by what a willing third-party participant would be willing to pay. And our view is that because of certain information that we've seen, including solicitor statements, et cetera, that would suggest what the rental would be on a market rent, we think that a willing third-party market participant would only be willing to pay that. And that's fundamentally where we stand, and that's what, you know, we have been back and forth quite a lot between our own valuation team. And I think from my perspective, you know, the conversation that we'll be having with management going into FY twenty five is, are we sure that the valuer, the council's valuer, has seen exactly what we have seen in terms of that kind of legal advice and and are using that same thought process in terms of what would a willing third-party participant pay based on rent expected rentals, rather than either what is the council currently paying or what might the council negotiate going forward? I hope that makes some sense.
Thank you, Chair. And and just building on from the last part of that response, clearly there are always lessons to be learned, there will always be, because of the value of this estate, annual reviews. And that will be the case, and we will take the lessons into what is now only a few weeks left to go in terms of the the current financial year and the valuations of that. And again, the crux comes down to, I need to make a decision in terms of the evidence that sits in front of me and, and, you know, for one of those assets, I think there's less information available to me in terms of the KPMG position. And, and, you know, I have to go on on evidence-based and the assumptions that I've been able to work through with the team and with the valuers. As KPMG would remind me, the assumptions are something that that I own, that they then review and report back to this committee, and that's where we do have have this difference. And paragraph two point three five, we are down to a difference in terms of local and regional positions, and and we'll review that again. And there was is the opportunity to see if that has has shifted and will shift or or doesn't shift in in the next month or so, and then in the next twelve months and so on. But at this moment in time, the evidence put before me supports the the higher figure, and that's where I I base the decision on.
Can I, can I, can I go back to my original question, that does it make any difference to the reader? I mean, we're going to get not quite qualification, but we're going to get a statement from the auditors, say, we disagree with the value. Is it not better? Would it not be better to actually put in the value that they support and therefore don't make any form of qualification at all?
I think I think there's a different question. The other question is, does it make any difference to the amount of money which the council can spend? And my understanding is, it doesn't. It is simply an accounting difference.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
It will be sorted out in the wash in future years, which is not entirely satisfactory in my view either. Related to that, it it does say on page five, paragraph, I've lost it now. Paragraph, number two point three point six, without the detailed backing information behind KPMG's valuation, which it is not appropriate for them as external auditors to provide. I don't really understand why you can't provide the detailed valuation in order that we, as a committee or management, can understand what the differences are.
So I think there's two separate issues that drive the difference, the material difference that remains. One is the one I've just spoken about, and I think that's less to do with the issue you're mentioning, because in our view, the information is there. It's just we have a different view, but there's nothing more that we could provide. The the information already exists within the council, and that's what we're basing our valuation on. The second, which is slightly different, relates to the leisure park, which I think is where we do have a difference. The challenge we have is that we cannot be seen to be providing a valuation. We can only audit the valuation that management provides. So what we what our valuers will have done, because they have access to lots and lots of market information, because we are auditors to a number of leisure businesses, et cetera, et cetera. Commercially, we cannot provide that information, and we cannot provide something which would suggest this is the value that this is the valuation that you need to rely on, because it needs to be your valuation. The challenge we give is, are the council comfortable that the valuers you are using have access to suitable and available market information in the same way that we do, which we would expect that they should? So, yeah, I appreciate we've provided as as much as we're able, but what we can't do is either provide anything that's commercially sensitive that we have access to, or indeed a detailed valuation that the council then uses, because that would kind of create a conflict as your auditors.
Okay, so going on to the another part of two point three point six on page five, it says, a further valuation will take place for twenty four, twenty five accounts with more time to work through any differences that might be identified by the auditor. So are you fairly confident that by that stage, we will have identified any differences and reconciled the difference then?
I would hope so. I mean, one of the things that Michael and I discussed and we're going to propose a debrief quickly. So hopefully, you know, within literally the next month, I would hope that that we can get together ideally in person to talk through some of these issues with more time, to talk it through, to go through exactly where our position sits, what we would expect the valuer to be taking into account, making sure we're comfortable that the valuer has access to as much information as they should, both in terms of from the council, but also market information so that we can work through these issues. We've clearly got significantly more time to be able to achieve that.
Thank you. Nick, I think, wants to speak and then Jeff.
Yeah, just very quickly, is the concern that the future rental yield of these properties, which are Cambridge-based, is likely to be less than that which we've got at the moment? And obviously, there's huge numbers of retail units in Cambridge that can't be given away very close by to the Tesco that we have. And so is that the sort of basis of this difference at the end of the day?
Essentially, that's one of the key drivers, yes.
But it would seem very obvious from talking to the developers in the Grafton Centre, for example, that your concern about future rental yield is actually really justified.
Yes, very, very quickly, I don't know the details of any of these properties. So I don't know what and how many there are and what their nature is. But you talk about the leisure park, which is a classical area where there are differences in valuation approach. So I don't know whether this, the leisure park, if that's the main culprit in this difference, is leased or is actually you're looking at as a, so where you might value up in rental and yields or a valuer may come along and look at bricks and mortar to replacement value or you're looking at the net revenues and discounting them and valuing them on that basis. So is that a cause of difference? I don't, that's a question.
Not really, no. Again, the methodology that's being used is, we agree with. It's the assumptions that are being used to drive it, which is generally driven by the expectations around rentals.
And that is a rental property, as far as this?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Michael, just help us out here.
And it is exactly that point. It's an assumption. What am I now, 22 years? I can't remember, 22 or 23 years of audit opinions, and this is my largest variation and my only material variation in that time. My natural tendency as an ex-external auditor would be to go along the lines that you would suggest. But in this instance, we have agreements that are several years away. So a very varied and unknown market position. We have local circumstances and local knowledge that would suggest a difference from KPMG's valuer. Therefore, that's the reliance that I've placed on in terms of that. As we move forward into 2425, we move another year nearer to those positions becoming realisable. We become another year closer in terms of the national and economic position that allows us to, you know, inform those assumptions where, you know, you will always have that change in that period of time and that will then get reported through in those positions. Technical accounting adjustments through the statement of accounts allows for that adjustment. Clearly, in terms of the monitoring that goes through the Strategy of Resources and Performance Committee of these assets, that could have an impact upon that at a future date, not at the present date. And therefore, it is important that through the audit process, we have that check and challenge as well as it is through our own accounting team that we have that check and challenge. That point is not today, that will be in the future. But we're required at this moment in time to take a snapshot view going forward. And we have that difference of assumptions based on local, I would suggest, versus national position. And I think just as was said then, in terms of our chance to understand KPMG's valuation more, there'll be the opportunity for KPMG to understand our local position more. And therefore, we will have a set of accounts in one, two, three, three and a half months published in draft, which will have the next updated figures within this. What I do recognise and I do absolutely acknowledge is we will continue to improve in terms of that challenge back to our valuer and our assumptions around this in terms of the provision of information, what we check and how we check. There's been some rigorous challenge done over the last few weeks that needs to take part as part of the 2425. And I thank external auditors in terms of their diligence in this process. It's been really helpful. But from an accounting perspective, we're talking about a technical adjustment and I've had to go on the assumptions that lay before me and the assumptions lay before me give more greater credence to the local position as of this date in that uncertain position, which is several years off.
Okay, any other comments on this aspect? I think people will hear what you say, Michael. My feel is that we are uncomfortable with the differences, but except that management have made the decisions that they have made and a further valuation will take place in time for the 2425 accounts with management and the auditors working through why the differences exist and whether they can try and reconcile them. Is that a fair conclusion? David, do you want to add something?
Michael would probably have to say it three times. He's said it twice already. Explanations, he's said it twice now, right at the beginning and just now. So say it again, Michael, then we'll believe you.
Do you want to say it again or we're going to, I think we just believe him. All right, thank you. So an easy one, Alison, you're happy with the references to pensions and audit that's been done for those and how their pensions are represented in the accounts?
Yes, I've been through these. I'm happy with how things are here. It's, there's been nothing of any real consequence, I think, come through from the auditors on the pension. So I'm quite happy with the situation we're in. It's obviously always a very difficult area because you're looking at assumptions that can easily be challenged. The basis behind the entire valuation, the pension scheme is based on, you know, future revenue streams, future outgoing which are unknown and will always be in that situation, always a challenge. My concerns remain around the valuation of Cambridgeshire and Counties Bank. But with, you know, with that one exception, everything else is, you know, exactly as I would expect it to be. And I'd just like to thank everyone who's been involved in that.
I agree with that. Any comments on pensions? No, I'm just happy. Go on, Nick.
Just to observe, it's almost incredible that the Cambridge and Counties Bank valuation that's presented is exactly the same as last year.
I think that's a typo. I think it's, so on page 142, if I can get to page 142. Oh, come on. It's indicating the valuation is exactly the same, but later on in the notes itself, it comes up as 84.8 million or something similar. Is that right, Tom? Or Ellie, are you able to confirm any of these numbers?
No, Chair, I think we will look at that before the final version is signed off. So thank you.
On page 176, at the bottom of page 176, it says effective actual results differ from assumptions. The investment in the financial statements, that's Cambridgeshire and Counties Bank, is 84.8 million. So if that's the case, then that indicates that it has actually increased significantly in value of the year. But that may or may not be right, Nick.
Well, nobody seems to be able to provide a very good explanation about how it is actually valued, but there we are. And I think the question is liquidity more than anything else, isn't it?
There is.
Sarah or Emma, do you want to comment?
Yeah, whilst obviously we're looking at the council's accounts, the actual valuation of of Cambridgeshire and Cambridgeshire Banks is reviewed in quite a lot of detail in the Pension Fund and in the Pension Fund Audit Findings Report, there's a page that goes into quite a lot of detail around how that is valued. That report was brought to the last committee, so it's obviously available online if you were to want to have a look and have any questions. But yeah, we included more detail in the Pension Fund report. So I don't have that to hand, but that would probably answer a lot of your questions.
Okay, thank you. Just going back then to this land, are we comfortable with the way that's indicated with a post-plan sheet adjustment? I think whilst we're still sorting out the new business plan, it's still something up in the air a bit. Is there anything anybody wants to say about this land? Alan?
It's not so much on this land, it's more on, I think, I can't remember where I saw it, I know Sarah made a comment. It's around the increased risk of debt recovery. Now presumably this land is one of those. And then the other one I was going to mention, which I know we've had before this committee at times, is adult social care in terms of the rising balances and getting that money. So I just wondered where those were. So it's related to this land, Chair, but it's not totally related, my question.
Could I suggest we pick that up as part of value for money? Because I think the specific point we make with regard to the financial statements is that there is a risk that the hundred-odd, 110-odd million debtor in relation to this land, there is a risk that not all of that is recoverable and there may be a provision required against that. I think that's a slightly separate point to the financial sustainability impact of both this land and DSG and that's something that we've drawn out as part of our value for money. So Emma can perhaps pick that up next. If that is okay.
As I was going to, forget it, Alan, that's the main thing. Shall we talk about waste PFI?
We can. Thank you. I'm going to be fairly careful about what I'm saying because there are things going on that are confidential. But I do come back to the basic question, who are we reporting to? Government will know about this, as government has instigated it. We will know about it. Even a future unitary authority that takes over will know about it. But the, there's a certain redundancy in the existing waste facility that exists, which is run by Talia, which is referred to in the notes on page 104. But I feel that we should be saying some more because I don't think it reflects a situation whereby we are paying for the next 10 years or 12 years, whatever it is, for services that we are not getting. Now, we're obviously amortising that over the course of this period, but I don't think that's reflected in the note. And I think it's probably important enough to say that government legislation in the Environment Act 2021 has impacted on this. And I don't know what we can say, negotiations are taking place, but there's quite a substantial liability for the future years. And I don't think we are reflecting, I'm not sure how I would report it, but the note doesn't say what I think it should say. So I don't know if that's sufficient to go on. I mean, I don't know how we conduct this debate because clearly delicate negotiations are in process. But it seems to me that it's quite a major commitment that we are in what we have and we can avoid for the next 12 years, for which it's not a value for money thing. I mean, this is a reporting thing. I probably shouldn't say any more at the moment.
Comment on that.
So I think there are these different components that are potentially, I'd actually say it's the other way around in that there is, there's a value for money issue and it is referred to in the Financial Sustainability section of KPMG's report. It's back to councillor Seif's point around users of the accounts and clearly the council is in a different position. It doesn't have shareholders in the way that a lot of the IFRS is designed for. What I can say is on an asset valuation point, although we've had the difficulty, we've just talked about on investment properties, actually when the the kind of physical plant and property has been valued, that value has had assurance through this process, which has been helpful. But then from a financial statements and reporting piece, my understanding is that that is part of what is disclaimed for KPMG's work this year. But as I say, there is some reference in the Financial Sustainability section and then we are into the, some of the contractual matters that are difficult to talk about.
If I were an external body taking over this body, it's something I would want to know about in the accounts, not in another appendix to it. It's just the note itself. I mean, as I say, I don't know how you'd report it financially, but we are, the notes are important. And my view is it doesn't reflect what the real situation is, which is moving of course at the time, but nevertheless, we have to make a statement.
Stephen, come in.
Of course.
Chair, just probably a helpful clarification because I think the way councillor, I understand why councillor Seif has characterised it in the way he's had, but it's not technically correct. We won't be taken over by another body. There will be a successor council. But I'm just conscious that how that can be viewed, we are in public after all, could mislead people that we are potentially going to be acquired or merged into another body. Actually, there will be a successor council, which in some parts of the country could actually be based on the County Council as a continuing authority in law. So there is a different way that that can happen. I just wanted to be clear, we're not going to be taken over because we are in public. Thank you.
No, good point. Any, you hear what he says? You're comfortable with that? I'm looking at you, Geoff.
Sorry, just to come back on that point, I was hypothesising from an accounting point of view. If, of course, I understand that, but which is why I prefaced my original remarks by saying the government knows, a successor body will know, we know. But who are we reporting to and what should we be telling them? That was my point.
Sarah?
I was just going to, I guess, reiterate what Tom said, that the PFI is actually an area that I'd say is fully disclaimed in the sense that we haven't actually undertaken work over the PFI. It was decided that we would focus on other things, given we wanted to meet the backstop. What I would reassure is that for FY25, we will be undertaking a full audit of the PFI and therefore ensuring that the accounting and the presentation in the accounts is in line with obviously accounting standards and what we'd expect to see. So we can obviously take that forward into FY25.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions before we move, oh, go on, Alison?
Just to clarify on that point about the valuation of Cambridgeshire and Counties Bank, it should actually be reading 84.8 million for the current year and the 69.7 is for the prior year. And it clearly is just a typo which needs correcting.
Yeah, I was pleased to be able to. Yeah, I was pleased to be able to tell Michael that there were a few typos which the auditors had missed this morning, including the table which has got external audit fees. I thought we were doing really well there, but no. So I'm going to email Michael and Tom and Ellie with those things that I've noticed. But Cambridge and County's bank is one of them, I'm afraid, Nick. But it is correct later on in the body of the report that it's indicating a substantial increase in the value, which is good. Okay, we, go on, Alan.
Probably the best place to pick this up if we're going to move on. Page three twenty six is around the school balances. And I know children, young people, we're spending a lot of time looking at schools in terms of negative budgets, you know, they're running out of money, et cetera, et cetera. I'm just trying to get my head around, I'm sensing, reading between the lines on this, that we have a and it's again not material to the accounts, but I'm thinking more from a practicality point of view to make sure we get the right information, especially for CYP. Is that the figures we're picking up, we're relying upon schools to tell us basically what they've got or rather than them being part of our central bank accounts. And then obviously we've got the smaller accounts. I know we had a reconciliation issue, I think it was with pensions accounts, wasn't it? But that was more West Northants a couple of years ago. Is this a hangover from that or something totally different?
Yeah, so I think it's different from that point. So we we have full visibility of school banking. So they all, I think, maybe the exception of one, or there's a hundred percent sign up to NatWest, who are also the council's banker and they operate through sub-accounts of the council. So part of our schools' finance team role is to look very closely at kind of schools' cash flow and making sure that issue is managed. That is slightly separate from the issue that I think is, was picked up through the audit, which was around part of our move to close the accounts more quickly. We had to take, we had to take balances slightly ahead of year end. And that, we need to introduce a further step in the process, which is easy to do and straightforward, that kind of picks up that difference. There's then a kind of third issue, which is less about cash flow and more about schools' financial sustainability. And that is, that is something that needs to be closely in sight for schools' forum, individual governing bodies and the council. And we're working closely on. So I guess in our response, we're kind of keen to differentiate those different points.
If I can come back very briefly, yeah, obviously it's not material to the accounts. But as you say, if we close on the twenty fourth of March or something, then that week there, there's because it's the end of the month, I don't know how schools pay their bills, but if they say pay most of them at the end of each month and there's going to be a sizable amount. Again, it's not material to the accounts, but obviously you need to make some sort of adjustment to pick that up.
That's it. And then just for the committee's benefit, what, you know, in many ways, local management buys schools of their balances through the governing body there. You know, we are relying on individual finance managers and office staff in, you know, in over a hundred schools across the county. So that is the, that's the kind of coordination effort. Quite often the Easter holidays fall right at year end as well. So that was why there was this push to kind of close earlier. So that is kind of the origin of that issue.
Okay, thank you. Which hopefully brings us on to the twenty twenty three, twenty four audit differences proposed for adjustment. We will be asked to agree to the treatment of those. So is there any other comments, questions on those? Are we comfortable with them? We've heard from Sarah that apart from the investment property income, she's happy with the changes. We're content. Okay, thank you. In which case we move on to value for money. Do you want to introduce this, Tom, or should we just pass straight on to the auditors?
So I think probably it is helpful if KPMG lead off this is their work and then our response in recommendations. But to just situate the committee, I think page two nine one is helpful in terms of summarising the overall position. And then those recommendations and our responses on page three zero one, three zero eight and three one four. We've already touched on some of the issues in terms of highlighting the oversight of the high needs block. And then also that the council's shareholder role, particularly in relation to this land. And we set out some of the steps we've been taking during the current financial year, kind of in response to that. But myself and colleagues will come back perhaps after KPMG have outlined more.
Lovely, thank you. So I'll just take you through value for money. But I think just to start off with, I'll just remind you what we look at when we consider value for money. So value for money, it's important to remember, it's around the arrangements in place to secure value for money throughout the year. So throughout the twenty three, twenty four year period, and we look at it in three domains. So we look at financial sustainability. So that's really understanding sort of how the council manages its finances, its resources, to make sure it continues to deliver its services. We look at governance, so understanding how decisions are made, making sure that there's appropriate information to make informed decisions and managing of its risks. And then the third domain we look at is include, we call it three E's, but improving economy, efficiency and effectiveness. So essentially is around costs and performance improvements to make sure that the authority is able to sort of manage its money and deliver its services in an effective way. So the detailed findings are included within our report. It's obviously a lot of information. So I won't, I won't take you through all of that. But I thought what's probably most helpful is if I take you through our risk areas that we've pulled out and the work that we've then done in each of those. So I'll start on the risks we pulled out in relation to financial sustainability. So I'm sorry, I haven't got the combined back pack, but on my document, it's page thirty five of my paper. So the first risk we've pulled out is around the cost savings programme. So here we identified that there was obviously some savings targets set at the beginning of the year. These were not all fully achieved throughout the year. So we've done some work to understand how that pressure was managed, reported and considered throughout the year. And we were comfortable that whilst that target was not achieved, the the management of that savings programme, that savings target was appropriate throughout the year. So it was identified, it was flagged, it was reported and there was appropriate actions taken and reporting made around that performance. So whilst we identified a significant risk in that area and we did some additional work, we didn't conclude that there was a significant weakness related to the cost savings programme. The second area we've pulled out is around sort of the aggregation of various financial pressures. So throughout our work, and as we've talked about today at the committee, there are obviously a number of different financial pressures affecting the council. So we've talked about this land. So there's clearly some potential pressures there. We've talked about the dedicated schools as well, so the schools and the pressures for the schools, the waste PFI. And also in twenty three, twenty four, there was some pressures linked to the solar farm. And whilst individually, you know, they're all, none of those, you would say they've all been managed relatively appropriately. The area that we considered that there is some risk associated to is when you start to combine all of those. And you actually say, when we put those multiple different pressures together, are we comfortable that there was appropriate arrangements in place to mitigate those risks? And whilst we have concluded for twenty three, twenty four, that there, that some of those risks obviously have crystallised more clearly in the twenty four, twenty five period, that there wasn't a significant weakness. But that there probably was work that needed to be done in terms of identifying those risks more clearly, particularly in sort of risk registers, reporting some of that in that sort of aggregate position. So rather than dealing with everything as a silo. So we have concluded for twenty three, twenty four, that there is no significant weakness. But we do sort of bring this, the attention that there is, is an area of continued risk and one that the council needs to continue to focus on. And therefore we have raised some recommendations there for management just to consider, which is detailed on the subsequent page and has been agreed. So our next area of risks that we've identified was then linked to the governance domain. So this was linked to the risk registers and is sort of married back slightly to those points I've just pulled out around some of the financial sustainability risks. Whilst we acknowledge that there is a risk process, that there is obviously risk registers across the council, what we didn't necessarily see was for some of those slightly higher risk areas that we considered, so this land, some of the DSG, that the level of granularity within the corporate risk register was maybe not what we would expect to see. So there's sort of a dedicated risk associated to each of those areas, acknowledging that there obviously is awareness of all of those risks across the council. But how that is documented and challenged could be improved. Again, whilst we haven't concluded that that is a significant weakness in itself, we have made a recommendation that some improvements made to those risk registers and how those sort of more significant risks are reported through. The next governance risk area that we've pulled out there is specifically linked to the governance arrangements linked to this land. So clearly there have been some historical challenges around the governance of this land. And we are aware that there was previous work done in terms of a dedicated report looking at governance arrangements and some actions taken. So here we have followed up on the work that had been done to implement those recommendations. And we could see that those recommendations had an appropriate action plan in place and that there was reporting on the implementation of some of those actions and that work was being done and continues to be done in terms of strengthening some of those governance arrangements. So again, we haven't felt the need to raise a significant weakness in relation to the governance sort of setup of this land. The next area, again, linked to the governance domain, was around specifically the governance over the dedicated schools grants position. So we did note that in twenty three, twenty four, the position on the DSG position had worsened and that there was some work to be done and it was identified by management that the additional work and planning needed to be done in relation to the action plans and how you will sort of get yourselves to that sort of position of out of the safety valve agreement, essentially. We have here raised a significant weakness related to the DSG. That is primarily because during twenty three, twenty four, it is based on the review that we have completed. We can't see that there was necessarily the right level of oversight and sort of actions taken in twenty three, twenty four. Again, are aware that actions are being taken post-year end, but during twenty three, twenty four, obviously that position significantly worsened. And there was a need to revisit that action plan to make sure that it was revised and appropriate going forward. So that one is, and will be reported as a significant weakness. The associated recommendations for those are then just listed on the next page and then have all been accepted by management. And then coming through to the last area that we've looked at, so again, our improving economy, efficiency and effectiveness, the three E's domain. So we've pulled out a risk link to the procurement and tender waiver compliance. This was in recognition of some of the findings made by internal audit during the year. So we did again have a look to understand what recommendations have been raised and what action was being taken in regard to those findings. So for here, we were comfortable that there was an appropriate action plan in place, that that action was being taken and that again was being reported. So haven't concluded that there is a significant weakness, but would obviously expect to see those actions implemented as raised by internal audit. And then the last area is linked to this land and I suppose slightly more broadly from a general subsidiary point of view. And it's really a recognition of the fact that you have got in this land a commercial entity essentially. And understanding that with that comes a high degree of complexity. And not always will individuals within the council, within a public sector setting, have the appropriate skills and knowledge and expertise to be able to provide the right level of oversight for those bodies and provide that level of challenge, particularly where things are difficult. And so we have made some recommendations in this area. We do see this as a significant weakness to strengthen some of that expertise and oversight. And that may well be bringing experts in, which we have seen. And again, we do acknowledge that work has been going on in twenty four, twenty five to continue that journey. But during twenty three, twenty four, we didn't consider there to be that sort of appropriate oversight to make sure that that level of expertise was in place. And again, we have raised that formally recommendation and management have accepted and agreed for that. So I appreciate that's a lot, but just in summary, we've raised, we looked at seven different areas, what we consider to be significant risk areas. So areas where we wanted to make sure we understood and did some additional work. Of those seven areas, we've identified two of those which have transpired into a significant weakness, that being in relation to the DSG governance arrangements and also under the three E's in terms of the making sure the appropriate sort of sector skills and experience are there for where you've got those commercial type subsidiaries going on. This is the narrative that we have reported here will be within our annual audit report, which is the public report. And so that will be sort of the summary there that we've provided here will be what is slotted into the annual audit report. Have any questions?
Thank you, Emma. Tom, do you want to just highlight the management responses? And then I was going to come to Mairead to ask whether you are happy with the responses that have been made, whether they address all the points that you've been pointing out in internal audit reports. And then to Stephen to confirm that he is comfortable that all the different things that have been identified by internal audit, by external auditors have been addressed. So that gives you a little while to be thinking, but Tom, you don't need any time to think.
Okay, well, I might just signal to, that Michael may want to come in on this point as well. I think, but this is a more detailed report than the committee's had for some time on value for money and kind of reflects those national reset arrangements. On the positives, it is good to see, we're continuing to see that build up of the assurance around the procurement position. This was an area where for several years, this was where weakness was identified by two of our previous auditors. But in the later years of EY and now through to KPMG, seeing that positive, more positive assurance and building on internal audits work. Just the other thing I'd say in responses, I think it's the kind of accumulation point of the risk of several of those sort of higher value risks from this land, waste PFI, high needs block, kind of occurring at the same time, that is the risk to financial sustainability. And we talk in the response around the work the council has done to assess its reserves position in more kind of extremist situations in response to that. And then commit to further steps in the first Strategy and Resources and Performance Committee of the new financial year, looking at our opening financial position again in that context, so really kind of closely monitoring that. And then, as I said in intro, acknowledging the points as well around the monitoring of the high needs block and the shareholder role in this land and pointing in our response to the further steps we've already taken in twenty four, twenty five and will continue going forwards. I don't know if any other colleagues want to add anything on those points.
Okay, well, Mairead, are you comfortable with what's being proposed from a management point of view?
Thank you, Chair. In terms of the actions that have been agreed and proposed, yes, very comfortable with those. I think much of the work is reflective of the findings of internal audit and highlights some of the key risk areas that are well known. I think in terms of what's coming out of our risk management processes.
Thank you. And Stephen?
So I've probably got a couple of broader comments to make, Chair. First of all, I'd just like to echo the fact that it's really welcome, we've got this more detailed report than we've had for a number of years. And secondly, having the fresh eyes of new external auditors is always welcome. So that independent scrutiny is very much appreciated and the depth and work that they've gone to is certainly very helpful in terms of setting out things we need to do moving forwards. I would suggest, however, that particularly on the governance section and some of the commentary around risk management, it would have been helpful if more detailed evidence had been taken, including interviewing me as the owner of the corporate risk register, which I did express a clear view about external audit during the process of their fieldwork. That invitation was not accepted or taken up and it was conveyed through the section one five one officer and colleagues in finance on more than one occasion. So whilst I'm conscious this is an independent set of opinions, findings and recommendations, I have to say I don't entirely accept the characterisation of our risk management arrangements as set out and perhaps think there is a more narrow view of financial risk being taken in the feedback we're receiving. That said, it's an independent and external opinion. That said, it's an independent and external opinion, so I respect that. I can't change it. I've made representations. Doesn't mean I'm entirely satisfied with how it's presented and I don't think that reflects adequately on the council's arrangements. As I say, it would have been helpful to have been part of the process to describe the corporate risk register and how that's managed. That opportunity was not taken. Thank you.
Do you want to comment on that in particular, Sarah?
Well, only to apologize, that wasn't, that wasn't intentional. I think we, you know, we'll take that on board absolutely for, for next year and make sure that, that you are included, Stephen. As I say, there's been a kind of detailed process that we've gone through. We've spoken to lots of people and reviewed lots of detail, but accept that point. And, and we'll make sure that chief executive is included in those conversations. Obviously, we do have regular discussions, but I appreciate not specifically in relation to corporate risk.
You highlighted the DSG being a big issue. Can I just check, CYP, Children and Young People's Committee, aware of the issues that have been raised by the external auditors? Will they become aware? How will they become aware?
Chair, if it would be helpful, I understand the executive director for children and education and families has provided information to the committee about the recommendations. What I would also note is that the, I think it's June committee, but the next, the next audit and accounts committee will have before it the executive director in terms of his responses to the internal audit recommendations overall. So you will also receive an update from Martin Purbrick at your next committee.
Okay, thank you. Just digressing slightly. I thought we were seeing Frank Jordan next. But, but.
My apologies, Chair.
No, no, that's fine. But that, we are keen that that report from Martin is included at some, a point. And it could well be included within the papers for the July meeting. Okay, Alan.
Just to add on that, I've been raising it at every CYP meeting that the detail needs to go to the committee. We have, as Michael says, there's been a briefing sent round to all members of that committee, but it's not been discussed yet. But if it's going to be discussed at June, then that's obviously, that's in the pipeline.
Okay. And then I'm conscious, Emma, that you're online. Is there anything that you wish to add as you're referred to in a number of places?
Thank you very much, Chair. No, not at the moment. I think that it's helpful to note around the governance requirements of this lands. Certainly that piece of work has been undertaken over the past year or so. And there are further improvements planned around that. And I look forward to discussing those further with the auditors over the course of the year. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? So I, I, I agree with Stephen, it's good to have a, a, a different set of opinions on this and a more thorough investigation than perhaps we'd had before, which I hadn't really appreciated, wasn't as thorough as you've been putting in. Just looking at what is page two nine one in our pack, but is page twenty seven, Emma, in your report. The summary of findings does indicate twenty two, twenty three findings, no significant weaknesses identified. And then the direction of travel arrows are upwards, which imply to me improving. But in fact, you've identified quite a few weaknesses, which I would have therefore put either horizontally or even downwards.
Do you know, we've had so many conversations about which way those arrows should, should go. So I think we were saying it was getting worse, so going higher up in terms of the risk. But yes, we, I can, I'll accept you could, could go either way. So maybe we'll, we'll just make that a little bit clearer as to what that.
Well, presumably it's whatever style it is in KPMG.
Yep.
And often in county council, they do indicate the direction of the arrow means getting worse or getting better. But in this instance, indicates getting worse. Right, thank you. Very good. Any other comments, questions? Are we comfortable with all the other aspects of the, the value for money assessment? I think as Stephen says, it's, it's quite a thorough bit of work. Has identified some significant weaknesses for which management have indicated what they plan to do. No? Okay, excellent. So we move to the vote and we're being asked to agree the treatment of audit differences as set out in section two point three. B of review and endorse the updated twenty two, sorry, twenty three, twenty four statement of accounts provided as appendix two to this report. And agree that the chair of the audit and accounts committee signs the final statement of accounts. And then C, authorise the executive director of finance and resources to provide a letter of representation to KPMG. And the, the draft of that was sent round to you all yesterday evening. Any comments? Are you happy with that? So those in favour or nod, put their hands up or something, as though that's unanimous. And that concludes today's business. The committee will meet next on Thursday, the twenty seventh of March, which is one of our routine meetings. So we'll get the minutes of this meeting and the previous meeting. I declare the meeting closed. Thank you very much for coming today.